Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 15th zoning board of approval, books on the board of appeals meeting, and we will first, we have a motion to open the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we will start with a salute to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Great, and next we will, we can have a motion to approve the minutes of October 18th.
I had, you got my corrections, right?
Yeah.
So with the corrections.
Right, I think everybody saw it. Right? I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Great, and now we will go to first item in old business, which is 55 Howard Street. Good evening. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your appearance. Who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Vera Architect.
Thank you.
Lots of things. For the last time, we slowly USP, we gave a referral to the occupational review board, which I had talked to a couple of times, and we kept working, working, working on. Finally, we see kind of an okay, provided I did a couple of things, including back in some. One of the things that the ARB asked me to do was just cut down the side of the porch, the length of the porch, as we would hear, to the property lines on the south side. So we cut that porch down four feet in length, and that reduced our site plan block coverage. This was before the board asked for reduction of existing non-conforming block coverage from 54.8%. And now I am back to 30.4%, so a little bit different from when we started out. Again, that was based on a couple of comments we got from you. They also asked me to, you know, look at the volume, scope of, the size of the proposal. And as you know, previous testing, we were looking to raise the house up. So we're kind of in this little FEMA zone, it's a FEMA zone, it's either here or there. We're trying to elevate the house in anticipation of, you know, things changing in the future. So we were looking to elevate the house by 30 inches, which is one of the increases in the volume of the houses we live in the house, as it's taken on our east elevation, if you go to the elevation page. If you're there. You can see how where the difference in the elevation is depicted in red on our proposed east elevation for front elevation. That's by virtue of having to elevate the house to the elevation it gives into this, out of this FEMA zone. It's been more compliant with the house, okay? And by raising the house up, obviously, that's going to increase the existing non-conforming pyramid that we have, as depicted on the existing front east elevation, which is up in the left-hand corner of the HA201. We have an existing volume due to pyramid 520 cubic feet on the south side. On the north side, it's 1,000, sorry, 1,320 cubic feet. And our delta there is 477 square feet. So it's a little reduction from when you first started that, because you may or may not be able to. We were asking for. Again, this is just thankfully wouldn't be official. And you jump down to our south elevation. Again, on the bottom left-hand corner is the existing south elevation. And you can see what the non-conformity is there, 369 cubic square, cubic feet. By raising the house, that doesn't change anything addition-wise on the house on that side. It's front, it's potentially the existing non-conformity. But it's now 846 cubic feet by virtue of elevating the house. And I think that's a couple of way across the board of 390. And I don't think that's changed all that much from when we first here in summer proposals. Actually, I apologize, it did change, because we were asking for a two-story house at one time. So you can see the significant changes from where we are to where we are today. Any questions?
So I do have one question. Are you saying that the ARB did approve you to add, I can't tell exactly how many feet on the red, where you're proposing the, the front elevation?
They kind of said if I made a couple of changes, and they were using those changes, they couldn't, but not their fault. There was a referral.
Just a discussion.
Thank you, it was a discussion, thank you.
I heard it was a discussion.
Okay, what they could potentially change, obviously, they can't, they can't even have it on the list. So that's what we started here, we went there, we're back here.
You didn't, but the, the front elevation isn't changing, it's just going up.
Correct.
Okay, so this is the same as this, it's just that they raised.
We're elevating the house up.
They elevated the whole house.
Right, so, so then I understand that, what, why are you showing the red?
Because now it's not conforming.
I'm showing the red as almost, as it is an addition to the house, you can see.
As if it is an addition, I got it, but it isn't.
In their view, we're changing the elevation.
I, I got it, so you're not, you're not adding it up, you're just taking the house and moving, you're moving the, yes. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
No gain to square footage or anything like that inside the house on that front elevation. If you remember going back, my original application, we were almost a two-story house.
Yes. Yes.
Major addition, you know, major, you know, major change to what we were originally looking to propose. And again, thanks to, you know, working with you guys in the ARB, this is where we're at right now. It's good, guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the next phase? Of elevation? Now, now we're speaking. As you can see, the sky plane has proposed on the western rear elevation. If you look at the existing western rear elevation, you can see that, obviously, we don't, we're not conforming based on the green, you can see on the, on the drawing, on the left-hand side. The red represents the new addition. Basically, because where we are skyplane wise, there is personally no change to our, well, there is a delta of 398 square feet, but that's, as it already existed. Basically, see, there's really no change on that sky plane. So it's 502 cubic feet, as shown in red on the left-hand side of the proposed elevation. And it's 390 cubic feet based on the right side.
Can I just, there's one thing I'm noticing now on these drawings. They're all to average grade, that's not how the pyramid is calculated now. It's to natural grade. So those numbers need to be tied in to, I think we mentioned this before, probably a long time ago, to spot elevations, at least spot elevations on the property lines. I know that property is pretty flat.
Pretty flat, right.
So it's not probably gonna change the numbers that much, but it, you know, it's just that technically, it's not average grade.
Yeah, so yeah, so that's in this moment. And I did force this, we know our sidewalk is higher than. Like you said, you've been there properly. Okay. Thank you. Okay, and then if you go to the sky plane, proposed sky plane on the north elevation, again, you can see how it relates to the Howard Street side. And again, that's due to the fact of elevating the house up. And then there should be really no change to our sky plane or pyramid on, on that move. That addition is set back.
Maybe with somewhere that's all revenue seeking, break it down.
Because one thing I'm confused about is on the south elevation. You've got up at the top, or maybe I can't, is it 846 cubic feet proposed?
Yeah, 846.
But then down below says 918? I mean, what, where does the, I don't quite understand how the 846 fits in with the 477 and the numbers below the house, which are 520, 918, and 398?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is that just the stuff to the left of the gable?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not?
That's correct.
So the, so the. So the 840, the 846 is what? I just, I'm confused about that.
Portion red?
Is it, yeah, but. But then what's the 477?
477 is what's out of performance. And 477 is our delta, is our change. So from 846 proposed, okay, and if you take what's the existing, the delta, the change is 477. So I think we ask right now, maybe just told us those things, so we can clarify that, yeah, those.
So in other words, the difference, the existing violation.
Yes. I think we would be able to clarify that when I say, south elevation, looking for a, a, you know, existing non-conformity is X.
I see they're up at the east.
X times water, it's 0.5. Just was that, so we're clear.
I get it, so it puts 369 existing, and then you're gonna ask for 477 addition.
And I think, I believe that number will happen.
And that's up at the tops, sorry, it's up here. So the total is, is like four, nine, yeah, oh, I see over there.
Yeah.
So it's like nine, you're asking for like 900, is that the total-ish? No, more.
I think so, I think that's, I'll have to total it after, so it's a little.
No, it's on the other side too, though. And that's. 500 on the other side, so it's really more like 1,400 or so.
It said before, the original, some of that, those come between thousands.
These numbers are not the numbers you're proposing now.
Numbers in the original, that's the original advertising, that's correct, so again, you look at those numbers, forget what we have now.
Right, but it, that's what's confusing.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Yes, I understand, so.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful to have some.
I think we'll clarify that, you know, so they were saying, south elevation is, the elevation that.
Right, existing and then.
Right. I think it's 370. We can, I'll clarify that, and also with the, with the spot elevations that I'll get, we'll make sure that we do that grading correctly.
So everything's accurate?
Yes.
Right, okay, that'd be helpful.
And do you remember what the total was before you made the changes? But in 2000 something, 3000 something?
I think at one time it was like 3,700.
Okay.
It was significantly higher. It might have been more, I'm not sure if I get those numbers up.
I mean, it's, it's still higher than we would want it to be. I mean, it's much better than it was, certainly.
And I, I might have missed the last meeting when this came up, but could you remind me or tell me why you had to raise the house by 30 inches?
We're in a weird FEMA zone. We're not in an A7, whereas. So I talked to the building inspector, he was like, well, you don't necessarily have to raise it, but I probably would with this ground water, you know, some things that we probably can do inside in the future, you know. I mean, our ground water is pretty high. There's water in the pool, and, you know, you can't keep pumping that water. So he suggested that we raise the house.
Add it to the foundation, or?
And then, and then raising for the back, close space up with a sled, right now it's not. We put a, you know, a FEMA-compliant close space sled down, so raise it up so the one has ground that's sitting in, and it's the dampness that's coming from the house.
Yeah.
As you know, it closes the castle for winter times, it's come back to springtime.
Just, just anecdotally, I did a renovation on this house a million years ago. And the, yeah, for Scott Keller. And the other bit, there is virtually no crawl space, there's no crawl, I mean, I don't think you can even fit under it.
Yeah.
There are places that you can't, but it's like in the, this has.
Couple of feet, like.
In some place, like.
It's so special, there's actually, there's a.
Yeah, there's a hatch, yeah, but.
From the outside, but it's probably.
Yeah, it's not, you can, can't.
Couldn't stand up.
No, 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 and it's always, it's wet, it is wet, it's wet in there.
Primaries, I mean, we have meetings in that house, we have to open all of those, all of those, and, you know, just to take everything out of that house. You know, elevating the house would be the way, so I was trying to give minimal, you know, as much as we can, whatever, get some, some product work done, and we don't need mechanical. Nice to have behind you.
Some kind of ventilation.
Yeah, the other thing about this house is it's sort of highly compromised. I don't know if the ARB realizes that, because the previous owner, Scott Keller, stripped the house, basically.
Of all, anything is terrible?
Yeah, like, they sold the flooring and all kinds of stuff, so it was a challenge to sort of put it back together. But.
There are a few similar houses in the area to this house, right? I believe there's.
Yeah.
Sorry, four that are almost identical.
Yeah.
That have been added onto or not. It's kind of a, kind of a neat aspect, and that's because of the pole that, that staircase, you know, basically.
Yes, yes, it's not.
You know, so I get from the front door to, you know, the second floor, it's personally a vibe, first time I was there, it was, it was this, so it is all dangerous, and we won't lose yours. I'm trying to get her onto the first, so.
I guess the only question we might have is, on the second floor, is there anything you can do? In, in either a case, the first floor or the second floor, in terms of reducing the plate height or anything? I don't know what your outside plate heights are.
Well, we came down with, one of the things the ARB had me look at is lowering that plate height. And I believe at one area, we do lower the plate height, you have to see the second, seven foot high. The area where we do have a plate height, add a pyramid, so we're not piercing.
Right, no, it's just at the outer edges.
Right.
So you're at seven feet.
Right, we're at seven feet, we're, you know, if we.
Right.
Pyramid is compromised, so we need to lower that. The, you know, the main part of it, middle part of it, where the sky plane.
And, and the second floor floor is just the existing floor extended.
That's correct.
And, and what's the height on the first floor?
Behind the first floor.
Have you thought about ways to further reduce the pyramid violation?
I thought of ways to get in, and this is the last call.
There have been major changes on that particular street. How about the neighbors, are any complaints of neighbors concerning?
I haven't been over there since I was so, you know, those things here. I think we were, you know, on Zoom, I didn't remember anybody putting their hand up and asking to be heard, so. But there's nothing officially in the file that's complaining of concerns. I believe persons in the south.
One of the, I thought one of the neighbors was complaining in terms of the height.
Well, probably your, if you're originally.
Yes.
Original app, yes, but.
Not, not since then? No, because this, this came up a number of years ago now.
We were about a year ago.
Following Ham's question, did you hear a specific neighbor who complained that this new set of plans is, is acceptable to him or her? Might be useful to get them to affirm it.
And you can show, you listened to their suggestion?
I'm still listening.
So, um, it doesn't, there is no actual proposed survey, correct?
No, I did, I did a version by site.
Right, but we need a proposed survey to, to actually grant a variance. I just want to make sure you understand that, and that should show the spot elevations at the property line. Right, because that might, I know that you've got numbers on here, but that might change some of the variance items, actually.
It seems to me, are you polling the board yet or not yet?
Sure.
Would we want to ask for the?
So anyone here from the public feels like to speak up, 55 Howard? Okay. So Alex?
I was just gonna say, it looks like you've made a lot of reductions, and, you know, and if you look at the elevations, nothing seems kind of grossly out of whack or out of proportion, but like Scott said, 13, almost 1,400 is still a fairly large number in terms of variance, so if there's a way to bring it down a little further, since you have to go back, redo the survey anyway, I think it'd be worth.
I guess this would, we put in some in the decision about raising it in terms of the floodplain, and that's.
The uniqueness of that.
The uniqueness of the property in terms of raising.
What's the width of the property?
It's, it's narrow.
56 in the front and 50 in the back.
Got it, it comes in, yes. That's why I was, okay, there's the 50, I see, okay. It's gonna be interesting to look at.
We've had houses that have been raised down for the. Right, what, what is that, right, yeah, yeah, we have had a number of houses that have been raised, yeah. So it does impact, some of them would not have been in violation unless they had had to be raised because of the floodplain.
Got it.
FEMA, basically.
Yep.
Right, Rod, oh, Roger Street, yeah, but down below, down on the other end, the, the other end of Glover, there've been houses down in there that we've, that have been.
I've seen, that's what I was trying to, I'm just trying. But no, no other ones yet on Howard, or on, I think, what else, Howard. And middle, I don't have the issue, garden maybe, trying to think streets, okay, we can look at that.
Glover.
Okay. So I think, if you could come back with, well, yes, friend, then we can.
Oh, this is.
Not the same.
I'm thinking of a different house.
They all start to look the same. So Nicholas, we, we appreciate your update, and if you could come back with the survey and with the site modification, so we'll know the calculation for the pyramid, that'd be very helpful, and. Any tweets to make it a little less is always well received.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
And, and just for the record, I was thinking of a totally different house, so ignore my anecdotal comments.
It was a difference.
They all start to look the same.
See, the last time I was there, I couldn't get to the back. It was locked.
Pardon, yes, we have a motion to table 55 Howard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And now we would need a motion to table 26 Walker, to adjourn 26 Walker until the December 20th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, and now we'll move to 45 Hillside Drive. So anyone else?
Anybody on Zoom for 45 Hillside Drive?
Okay, we can look calm again at the end, or do we just adjourn, what do you think? Okay. Now we will move to 11 Henry Street. I'm sorry, I, I can't hear the speaker, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name is Anne Doyle, Michael Smith Architects, and I'm here with our clients and owner of the house, Jacob, Jacob Brumford, being back there, and we're here.
Excuse me, just, we will need to swear you in, yeah?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you could just raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
So, this project is a kind of a full renovation of the house, but the parts that we need to talk about today. Go to page 002, it's kind of a diagram. So our two different items are. It's the diagram, the two different items we're trying to talk about are the roof line at the back, the rear extension, and then to the parking, local parking, which is now on Roger Street, to the side of the house on Henry Street. So you can see those, those parking on that diagram, and the roof. I guess, we can, I mean, it's not pretty much to talk about with the parking. For west, it's in a small, narrow side yard, which actually, I believe most of it is considered a rear yard. And it's around 14 feet wide, so our space is up nine feet, like 20 may approach in the five-foot setback required for parking space. And on the legal definitions here, it says we're gonna approach maybe two and a half feet into that five-foot space, to allow us for planting on either side of parking, planting next to the house, and then planting next to the western property line.
How many bedrooms will the house have?
It's, it's, it's a three-bedroom house now, it's going to be a three-bedroom house. What's happening is one small addition on the western side, we're not increasing square foot or anything, we're moving square foot from the western side, it overflows the eastern side, which is the side of Roger Street. And we're just reconfiguring space, so.
No, well, actually, I just, I'm just talking about, because parking is based on bedroom count.
Yes, three bedrooms, so.
So it's just three, right, that's all you're gonna have, so. Okay.
So, I guess, any questions on the parking?
Yeah.
You can also see it on the layers.
Just another anecdote, this one I know is true. Across the street at, I think it's 20 Henry.
Yeah.
We did allow a variance for parking closer to the property line than five feet. Which is right across this down from this property.
Towards Madison?
Towards, no, the other way, towards Division, right? Um, towards, um, no, the other way, towards Division, right?
Okay.
It's, it's this house here.
Got it.
There's a driveway here, close to, closer to this property line of this house.
Oh, that's one that they recently did.
Right.
Yes, I remember, yeah, 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 okay. Um, all right, so that's good to know. Now, um, given that you are looking to put the pool in, there was a request from, um, the public to not move. Given there's so much traffic on Henry and so much parking and how tight it is already, I don't know if you saw that letter.
Yeah, there was a comment from somebody, okay.
Actually, the neighbor right across the street.
Across Henry Street?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, fine, but it, it's, I mean, it's a single family house, it's one car, maybe two cars, it's not.
The owners probably parked on Henry Street in front of the house anyway.
They parked there anyway, yes, that's why they wanted to move the park to the side, because they never enter from the back.
Right, the previous owner used to enter from the back all the time, but I think.
They don't, they always go through the front door.
So if they're gonna use their driveway, that'll be helpful. Hopefully they'll use.
I'm sorry, I forgot to make you go backwards, but I, I missed the October meeting when this, this one came up, I believe.
No. This is the first time, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
It's all in your old business.
Just because they never came.
All right, then, so could you explain, because I'm less informed, to summarize again why you decided to relocate the driveway, so we understand why the need doesn't pull, but.
Because of the backyard and then also the, the owner. They actually typically don't have a problem on finding parking on Henry Street, and that's normally where they park and go in front doors. So this was kind of for them a convenience that they would park. And the adjoining property has its driveway as well at the other side of that property line, so it, it seemed like a reasonable place, so.
The two drives.
The two drives next to each other, so no one's approaching on the quieter parts of the property. And then also to open up the backyard so you could put a pool in, is that the idea?
Yeah, absolutely, well, I mean, the pool, yes, but also for the, for the tight lot, you know, it's not that long, so just the back, backyard space.
Yeah, that makes sense. And obviously, uh, there's no way to reduce that, that, uh, large a setback from two point five to five feet to get that full.
If you park right next to the house, you might be one foot over, it's, it's a little crooked, that's why I'm not giving you the exact dimension.
Oh, I see, yeah.
You know, the, the lines aren't a hundred percent, but, um, right, but you'll, you'll, you know, it just seemed better to kind of locate the parking so you could landscape it and, you know, none of it's squashing the house.
Against the house, I got you. All right, thank you.
And so you're just gonna close everything up on Roger Street?
Yeah.
Because you'll take the garage out?
Yeah, yeah.
So do we want to talk about patio?
Well, one question we had was, there are two patios shown.
On the proposed?
Uh, yes, the proposed survey, there's one adjacent to the pool and there's one sort of adjacent to this. So what are those patios?
They, I believe, are stone and they know.
Were you meaning stone gravel or stone?
No, really, they're face, face stone.
Okay.
Know it was calculated by the Landscape Architects, it's based, they, they calculated it and gave it.
Right, but they, shouldn't those have setbacks, Liz? And they don't, right? So.
The setbacks have not been identified.
The setbacks have not been identified, because one of them, the one at the end of the pool. Well, it's, yes, that, that patio is closer than, uh, twenty feet to the Roger Street, but the other patio is too close to the rear property line, because it's not ten feet.
Yeah, and the patio is considered like an accessory.
It's an accessory, right, a structure, an accessory structure, right.
So would that require them relocating to the other side of the pool, perhaps, or, or?
Well, it's gonna require a, a variance or not having it, or I don't know, I don't, you could put it at the other end of the pool, I don't know what you want to do with that, but that might, there would be another variance, plus the other one would technically.
The one on Roger, the one closer to Roger Street.
Right.
Or could you just have, or couldn't they just have grounds?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you could, if you did, if you, if they're gravel or grass, they don't have setbacks. If it's some sort of hard material like bluestone or brick or something like that, no matter what is said in, then they do have setbacks.
Yeah, I believe they were intended to be stone, of those, and they did, I'm just surprised the surveyor didn't mention that they were an issue with the setback.
So when they calculated the, um, total lot coverage, do we know if they took those into consideration?
They did, yeah.
Sorry. It's okay.
Yes, what happened is, um, since, uh, yeah, the twenty eighteen is what we were using, because that's the garage, so trying to fix the garage and thermite, maybe down, when we told the building inspector before about it, he said that we could use the, you know, the lot cover and roof cover, whatever that the garage provided, even though it had to be removed back in two thousand eighteen. I think it's, it's.
I mean, many costs.
Yeah.
You could use it towards something else, towards other levels.
That, that's not true, though, is it, Liz?
I never, I, I will have to ask Chris, I don't know if he knew that situation.
He wouldn't have been here in two thousand eighteen.
Get to get the pre-existing non-conforming of it usually.
Right.
If you take it out.
You take it down, you lose.
Two years ago, yeah.
No, he wasn't here.
If you take it out, you lose it.
Plus, it's, um,
But I believe the.
It's gone up, though, anyway.
Yeah, you need a variance for the fact that a lot of coverage has gone up.
The lot coverage has increased, or is above twenty-five percent.
No, that's what we, so she thinks it's used, but yes.
It's.
Yeah, and we will, I mean, if it's not.
But it goes from twenty-nine to thirty-one, or almost thirty-two, how could that be a reduction?
But it's, it's a reduction from the two thousand eighteen lot coverage, but then the question is if that's, if that's.
You may not.
Capable or.
Yeah.
Yeah, because in the past, if something has disappeared, you don't have it anymore.
You don't get, you don't get credit for it.
No.
Yeah. Because the other thing, confusing thing is.
Unless you get approval to swap one square footage for another, right?
No, there isn't, no, there's no, well, I mean, unless we give them a variance. But just so you understand, we had like a million building inspectors, and most of them didn't understand the code at all.
There was a time period of.
Carrie can testify to that.
There was a lot of turnover at one point.
Yeah.
In fact, Carrie was the building inspector for a while.
So, yeah, no, I mean, we'll work with it, but we were, we were under the impression from conversations before that we could work with the number, including the garage that was removed.
And, and who told you that?
It was, oh, I could look at his name off this, I don't have it on the public heading, it's about two and a half years ago.
No, I didn't know if, say, like, the person you bought the house from told you that.
No, no. The garage was there when they, when the house was bought, it was shortly after that, it was, it was just, um, leaning and unstable.
Understood.
So just, so now, in the next go around, you're gonna need to add that as a variance item, the lot coverage.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and, or we don't add it, yeah, okay.
Right.
Or you, or you don't increase lot coverage.
Right, you can either take those patios out, make sure you have the right numbers and.
Then you have to be below twenty-five percent.
The old garage doesn't.
So, yeah, you'd have to take enough out to be below.
Confirming that the old garage, we cannot count, or you're gonna?
We're confirming.
Well, Liz wants to check with the building inspector to make sure that he will, but, but that's the way we've done it in the past, so we're not assuming.
But I think what Scott's also saying, let's just assume you can't use any of the garage coverage, right? But if the current existing coverage is thirty-one percent, sorry.
Twenty-five.
If you're going down, say thirty-one to twenty-nine, don't you still need a variance to go over that twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Just to, you know, and often you'll get it, because it's, it's already existing, but nonetheless, it does have to be formally there.
It's really not, it's really not existing, if the garage isn't there.
Yeah, because.
Right, and then just remember that my, what, the materials that you use on the patios becomes important, just in terms of additional, um, setbacks, right, because you'll want.
Setbacks and.
Because they may have to be re, the only thing I'm getting at is it may have to be re-noticed, in which case that's gonna affect your schedule. Yeah.
It is, however, we'll lose it.
Right. Yeah.
So it's both lot coverage and setbacks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the parking was ready?
I mean.
I think it makes sense.
I'm pretty okay with the parking, as long as you have, you know, some space, um, between you and the neighbor to plant.
Yeah.
Out. I think that that will be okay.
And the neighbor knows, have you shown plans, neighbor?
Well, you notified the neighbors, um, of this.
Perfect.
It would always be.
No, right, but I think.
It would always be helpful to get a, a, a friendly letter from the neighbor just saying that they're fine with relocating, with you relocating the driveway to.
Next to their driveway.
Okay.
Great.
No, it makes sense to have driveways together, because then, it's just the cars that are offending each other, not the people.
Okay, so, um, okay, so we'll, we'll relocate all the site line stuff like you. So if we look at the, um, the pyramid, we'll, um, variances, um, like obviously in life, but, um, basically, uh, I don't know if you know the house, it's, um, the front is a compartment, so there's a front piece of the vital house, and there was an addition at the back, which is more, it's like one floor on the front, two story with the front. Going in, um, you know, different slopes, formers, um, piece of it's one story, so our intention is not to like change too much, we keep the original Greek vital front piece of the house, and we, um, the rear addition, we reconstruct the roof lines on that, simplify it, um, we keep the E pipe as it is, and we change the slope so it matches the historic front part of the house, just kind of clean it up and simplify it. So, um, the existing addition, um, is non-compliant with the pyramid rule, and we would be increasing that slightly, because, you know, the roof now is like this, we're just making a pitch match the existing house, so, um, I don't know, do you have questions you can see on the elevations existing, because really the only elevation that's affected, the street elevation is affected, but that's existing, we're not changing anything there, um, it's the whole house, it's the western side, um, at the rear, where we're just raising the, um, the roof of the existing addition.
So are you?
The G two oh one, that really kind of tells the story, um, I know two oh one, sorry, I lost, um, two oh three.
So are you actually tearing off the rear addition or just changing it?
We are, we're rebuilding it.
So that raises that other question then, right, Liz?
We're rebuilding it, same, um, you know, it's, it's no larger, same footprint.
I think what Scott asked, are you, are you demolishing existing?
I think it will.
Floor and then just rebuilding it?
We may say some of the first floor and then the, the, um.
So Liz, again, this is.
Sort of a different situation, right, because, I mean, it depends on the municipality, but, you know, sometimes if you keep a wall up, you're good.
Right, right. Right, so.
It's much different than demolishing entirely in two thousand eighteen, from the back, if I still have the grandfather rights.
Right.
No, we're not doing that, no.
So.
Sorry, Liz, did you say it's different than what?
Than demolishing an entire structure in two thousand eighteen and claiming grandfather rights in that structure and so on.
Okay.
So just, just to confirm then, because there's a big difference, because it's either thirteen sixty-three or four eighty-four, so we can assume that it's only four eighty-four, just the increase, not the pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
Okay.
Which is a lot.
Right.
It's a lot better than what I had put on thirteen sixty-four.
If all were increasing, it is four eighty-four, I'm fine with it, I don't think anybody's really gonna notice.
And it's in the rear.
It's in the rear.
It's not gonna really be seen.
It affects only one property, really, and that's the side that has the, they have a swimming pool back there, too, don't they? The adjacent property, where the driveway is, yes, and the swimming pool is sort of on that side. No, the house isn't close to it.
And the E is staying, the bulk of the E is staying the same.
And the neighbor on Rogers, which would be behind you, there's vegetation.
Yeah.
There, or you're gonna be adding vegetation?
We're not really, we're not increasing out that way, so. They will have this instead of a pitch, and then we do, coming out, it's just gonna be one, it's group lining up, but we need the same front house, the whole house.
And there's no decks or anything going out to, look at.
It's just, um.
Plus, there's no pyramid violation in that direction.
Right.
It's just, just on the side.
It's all on the western side.
Right.
And that's where the driveway is.
Yep.
And there, there's a garage here.
The garage is gone.
Right. No.
Oh, they're on their side, on the, on the man, called the Madison, whatever, yeah.
So it seems to me that your two main remaining issues are the side yard setbacks on the patios, uh, or rear yard setback on pat, on one of the patios, and then the lot coverage issue you need, you need to get straight. And then also just making sure that you're properly accounting for all the variance requests, because the lot coverage one is not included here.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
No, I think that's, summed it up.
We'll come back then with advice like plan based on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And otherwise, I'm fine.
Yeah.
We can keep the, the parking, we keep the roof line change, and we come back with the lot.
Yeah, I mean, you still have to keep the, you still have to keep the variance there, of course, it's.
Thank you very much. We can, we can motion to table this. To December twentieth.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. And now we will move on to the decision on forty-eight Union.
We should decide what to do with this.
All right, so we could second call forty-five Hillside Drive. Okay, so we will adjourn for, I don't know how many times this has been, um, forty-five Hillside Drive, so December twentieth. A motion?
Subwoofer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, now we will move on to the decision for forty-eight Union.
This is the decision for John Good, forty-eight Union Street, um, we have to construct a two-story addition to the pre-existing non-conforming two-family residence and required, um, pyramid fee, strip back fee, and also to grant the variance to allow the non-conforming use, in this case, the two-family home in the R twenty zoning district.
Yes, that's, that's better, thank you, I just hear the paper shuffling, so.
Okay, this is an application to construct a two-story addition to the pre-existing non-performing two-family residence and requires, um, pyramid relief. A setback relief, and also to grant the variance to allow the non-performing use, in this case, the two-family home. In the R twenty zoning district, an enlargement or extension, which cannot exceed fifty percent of the gross floor area of such building or structure, actually be related to the non-performing use to the effective date of it first time it become non-performing. So the board, um, considered the application, and the property is comprised of seven thousand five hundred thirty square feet, it's forty-five foot feet wide. Um, in the R twenty zoning district, where twenty thousand square feet is required, or, and the lot width is required to be a hundred feet. Um, therefore, the lot is non-performing in respect to lot area and lot width. Additionally, the property, um, is a pre-existing non-performing two-family home, and the, the property, the house is located at the zero lot line on the western side, so any addition to the, um, property in the house would require pyramid relief from the board at the very least, and setback relief as well. Uh, so for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board decided to grant clearance.
Great. Yeah, so we can make a motion to approve the decision for forty-eight Union that Liz just read to us.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Alright, so now we're gonna make a motion to go into an executive, um, meeting session. So someone can.
So move. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if there's anyone on the public Zoom, we need to turn you off, and, um.
But you have to come back, don't, don't.
She does.
Barbara?
Yes?
We're just going into executive session, president, we'll be right back.
Alright, no problem, I'm still here.